Is our consent agenda, which is the minutes of January 25th, January 9th, because remember those came in late for the last meeting. The warrants circulated and the liquor licenses. Presumably, I know we had a chance to get some edits to Nancy Lively on name spellings. Presumably, you've all had a chance to check in with Stuart about any questions you had on the warrants. But if you have any lingering questions now would be the time for the purposes of discussion. I'd ask for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeanie. Jean Connor has her hand up.
Yes, super quick. On the minutes for January 9th, Nancy, line 18, it should be the motion carried with Jim Carroll's vote not heard, not note heard.
Okay, thank you. Eagle Eye Legal, really appreciate the fact that you read these so closely, Jean, and that you always come up with really good little things that somehow we all managed to miss. Any other comments on minutes, warrants, liquor licenses? If not, I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. The consent agenda has been moved on. So with us tonight and probably as a standing agenda item for a little while, we have Megan Harrington from the Health Department. Megan has been an incredibly valuable asset for the community and her work with the Health Department and I think while we're going through what we're going through right now, which is some very scary high COVID numbers, I think it's probably worthwhile us having a fairly regular check in with Megan. So we hope that the rest of the board agrees, but we felt that this was a good, good interim step. So Megan, thank you for being with us. We, we aren't looking for a prolonged statement, but we do need an update and anything people need to know at this point would certainly be welcome. Again, thank you for joining us. I think you're muted or for some reason we're having trouble hearing you. No, we're not hearing you. It, you're muted now. No, I wonder if it's worth you logging out and logging back in. Why don't you try that? Okay. Yeah, so we'll give her a chance to try coming back in and see if the technological part works out. Let's see, we, there's really no other part of this meeting that we can jump to. Quickly, I guess it might be a good time to remind people that the town meeting is going to be virtual this year. It's going to be on March 1st. It'll be 7:30, but it'll be by Zoom. It'll be in a Zoom webinar format and we're working out the details of that at this point. The, everything will be voted on, as you heard at our last meetings, the following day. So there will be no votes taken as per the Secretary of State's recommendation on the evening of town meeting. But March 1st, 7:30 is the time that will begin. The, the school board meetings will also be happening by Zoom and they'll be happening before that. So let's see, Megan Harrington is rejoining us. So Megan, welcome back. I hope, I hope this one works better. Let's see, let's.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good job. All right. Here's to logging out, logging back in. Well, listen, thank you very much for being with us and take it away, please.
Yes, thank you so much. Apologies for that. I was blessed with the new laptop, but with the comes, you know, great responsibility to figure it out. But thank you so much for having me and letting me touch base with the community. I think as folks are well aware, Bennington County and the town of Bennington, we are in a surge right now, what would be considered. Starting mid-December, we did start seeing an increase in cases. And we did identify a couple of larger gatherings that we are still kind of feeling the reverberations of even now. You know, we, we anticipated household gatherings through the holidays. I think what we are seeing now is kind of some relaxation in, in household level decisions. You know, I think most folks are looking for that smoking gun. They're looking for the thing we can point to, to, to finger and say that this was a outbreak situation. Unfortunately, we have not seen kind of a common link that, that would, you know, allow us to pinpoint the way we've seen in other communities. Folks might recall youth hockey tournament up in the Berry area or other large gatherings that resulted in, in outbreak situations in communities. That's not the case that we're seeing. The, the pattern we're seeing in our community is small household engagements that are, we know where one to two folks are, are positive and that has led to community-wide transmission. It's, it's, it's a tough news to share. But I think the silver lining is that much like a lot of the decisions we've made over the past few weeks have led to an increase in cases, we can also start making changes that will actually bring our cases back down. So I think folks remember the stay home, stay safe order that was really pushed, you know, in the fall and, and late summer. That has not ended. All of those, that guidance still is in place. And we are still asking folks to only, you know, limit contact with their household members. That, you know, folks should still be limiting interactions and, and sticking to those that guidance, continued mask wearing, social distancing. Those, those things are still very much in play. Some of the thought is at the holidays, folks might have gotten a little taste of, of what it feels like to be social again and to see our friends and families and loved ones. Unfortunately, it's time to kind of roll back a little bit of that and to hunker down a bit and start going back to where we were with very limited, you know, gathering with, with folks outside of our households. The situations we are seeing, we're seeing households, transmission, work sites, school, houses of worship. There's no single sector, you know, where we're saying this is where it's happening. It really is at a community-wide transmission level and it really is smaller engagements. From our contact tracing team, we're hearing that the average number of close contacts identified for someone who tests positive is, is three, which can show you like how easily that it can go from a small situation to ramping up. That three contacts, you know, could lead to more widespread transmission. So, you know, the Health Department, you know, from our local office, we're asking folks to kind of hunker down. I almost think of it as, you know, when the new year hits and you start keeping your food journal because your diet got all out of whack. You know, maybe it's time to kind of think about our COVID journal, think about some of the behaviors and decisions we're making within our households and our social networks. That might be putting us at risk and, and, you know, asking folks to think about that. And maybe we can start to see our numbers go back down.
Thank you, Megan, for that summary. I have at least one hand up here. So I'm going to ask Jim to go ahead and if you don't mind taking a question or two.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Hi, Megan.
Hi.
I heard there's a question that I have about scheduling inoculations. I've heard from three different members of our constituency that they found it really difficult to get the scheduling done and found it very frustrating. As a matter of fact, I included that information in an email to Senator Campion and forwarded it to the Chairman of the House Committee on Health and spoke with Jill Kruinsky and both Chairman Lippert and Jill said that, yes, they were hearing similar complaints and it was really, the way that, that was related to me is that the order in which the information was entered, it asked for a date first and give all the relevant insurance information, social security. And then at the end of it, they would click on send and it would say that the date was unavailable. So my question to you is, do you, number one, is have you found that to be true? And number two, what is the Health Department doing to reorganize the application process to, you know, minimize or get rid of that problem?
Sure. And this is the vaccine registration process?
Yes.
Okay. So we have heard that it is, can be somewhat trying situation to get through. I think the hope was that for folks who, you know, were having issues getting through the registration process online, that they could reach out to our call center. We have an 855 number that anyone can call and have a real live person to walk them through the registration process. That would be.
How many people are, how many people are staffing it statewide?
The last I heard, we had over 200 people staff for that call center. And the average wait time, I, I did hear there was a wait. So if you did call, you know, you'd probably be put on hold and the average wait was about nine minutes, the last I heard. And that was a couple of weeks ago when it had first launched. So it might be a little, a little less at this point now that we've been rolled out for a couple of weeks. But that is, that is very frustrating. I think, you know, that was everyone's thinking in that, especially this first age band, 75 plus, getting through that registration process online, you know, I think folks anticipated that there were going to be barriers. And a lot of the messaging was, you know, get with your family, ask your millennial kids to help you through that process. And if, if that's not an option, you know, then reach out through the call center for help.
Well, it's good to hear that you're, you're, you're trying to address it. And, you know, as you pointed out, you know, the, the first of those people are the most vulnerable. And that, you know, wouldn't casting no aspersions toward people in their seventies and eighties. They may not be as computer literate as, as some older citizens or anything that can be done to more speedily get them immunized is ideal.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Jean.
I'm wondering about how the hospital is, is coping. I think I read something, I can't remember where I read, it might have been on VT Digger, that they were really to capacity. So how is the hospital doing? And then I always have to remind myself when I read those numbers, that's the county.
Right.
Bennington County. Is there any way for us to know what our rate is more on a local level, like in Bennington, or is that the best that, that we can do?
They actually, they're able to drill down at the town level. There's a cases by town map. They do it over a two-week period though. So there's some differences in the way that that county map reads versus the town map. And they do that really because in some towns with smaller populations and as a, it's easier, you could possibly identify folks if the numbers are, are low enough. So you can drill down at the town level. And, you know, across Bennington, we're able to see the town of Bennington is a little bit high, Pownell Arlington. They, when you look at the county level, and I think this is important to note, when you look at our county level data, that actually does include non-Vermont residents. If they sought their test here and it will be counted in the state, at that town level, that is only Vermont residents. So it does kind of give you a picture of, of the folks who, who live here and our case rates. As your question for the hospital, right, the last I heard, and this may be a couple of days late at this point, there was a little over 60 hospitalizations in the state due to COVID. And I believe SBHC was housing a little over 20 of those, about a third of the cases in the state. Believe it was creating some, some issues, but I believe they were able to address those. They've been working on these plans for months and months and months. And so I think they were, they're in readiness mode. So, but I think it, you know, it really shows how, you know, our, a high case count has kind of a direct implication in our hospitalization rate. You know, I think a lot of folks, you know, they don't see COVID. It's not in their realm. But when you start to look at those hospitalization rates, you very much can see the correlation between, you know, what's going on in a community and how that can impact our healthcare system.
I thought of one more thing really quickly. The snowbirds will be coming back if the snowbirds left in the first place, which they may not have. So is there a preparation or a special way to communicate with folks coming back from Florida, let's say, March, April?
Oh, that's a great question. At this point, the travel quarantine guidance has not changed. So if you do arrive back to Vermont from wherever, you should be quarantining for that 14 days or testing out at day seven. So none, that has not changed even with the vaccine rollout. Folks are still being advised to, to not travel and if they do, they should quarantine. So we would ask our snowbirds to do that as well. My parents included.
Jim, very quick question, please. I need to move on.
Okay. Megan, I brought this up with the Governor's Office a couple of weeks ago. And it was about, you know, proper social distancing and mask wearing at ski resorts. And you may or may not have seen the WCAX video where, you know, some people were wearing masks, others weren't. And social distancing wasn't being practiced. And, you know, in my committee, we committed, I think it was approximately $2 million to make sure that ski areas would do, would commit to that. Have you found that, that ski areas are being more compliant or compliant to begin with?
From what I understand, you know, everyone's coming to the table, they're recognizing that the cases are increasing. And so I am not on the team, but there has been communication started with our local ski resorts about some expanded testing opportunities, some increased communication to, to visitors and staff alike at the resorts. So that is very much in, in progress, in process. And that communication strategy, there's going to be increased messaging from the, from the Department of Health to the region through front porch forums, through Facebook posts, through print and digital media. So there's, there's a big push right now at the statewide level to, to see us succeed in reducing our, reducing our cases.
Is, is anybody from the Health Department going to the, the ski areas to see if they are compliant? You know, like when I was a food cart owner and there were surprise inspections. And I wonder if the, the Health Department is employing those same what?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I am not, I'm not familiar with the way they're monitoring compliance with them. But I do know that there's a lot of conversations and collaboration going on with the, with the resorts and media.
Thank you.
Thanks. I need to wrap this up. But Megan, I, I know that from our conversations that the one message you've been really wanting to push out is that if you are at all unsure about anything, get a test.
Get a test.
It's really easy. And would you just very briefly remind people what they need to do to that, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. Testing is available seven days a week in Bennington at Bennington Rescue. You can sign up online and there's also an 855 number similar to our vaccine registration process. If you had a known exposure or suspicious, suspicion of exposure, get a test right away. And then if you have possible quarantine for those seven days, follow up with another test. A negative test wouldn't initially get you in the clear. We want folks to double check. That's a underutilized resource in our community right now is our testing operation. And we want folks to take advantage, especially frontline positions, our essential workforce. That testing is there for folks to make sure that you are safe and that you're keeping friends and loved ones safe. And I'd love to just share, I, I didn't want to, I shouldn't have started out my, my presentation on, on a negative note. Our community is doing wonderful. When I go out, I see people wearing masks. I see folks, you know, having tough conversations with friends and saying, we're not getting together. You know, not the Super Bowl and see you next year. So I want to recognize that there is, we've been doing this over a year now. And people know what to do, but I, you know, the fatigue is there, but if we just hunker down a little bit longer, you know, persevere.
It's really true. It's been a long time. I get a pretty regular report from the hospital and, and according to them, this is day 334 of the pandemic.
Yep, it feels like it.
All right, Megan, thank you very much for.
Thank you so much.
Joining us, I think maybe kind of coming back next in a couple of weeks and we'll, you know, we'll get an update from you then.
I will plan on it. Thanks so much.
Let yourself out. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the second public hearing on Article Three. This is a proposal for a mayoral form of government. Many people have seen it before. We've had it in front of the voters a couple of times. The plan for tonight may not work. I was going to give the sponsors a couple of minutes to talk about it. I don't see either of them in the waiting room at this point. I was looking for Mike Bethel and Nancy White.
Donald.
And I don't see them on at this point. Go ahead, Jeanie.
Donald, did you want to do public comment first?
Did I jump over public comment?
You did.
I did jump over public comment, got mixed in the middle there. Okay. Thank you for that, Jeanie. Yeah, so public comment. Likewise, we don't have anybody in the waiting room right now, so I would maybe just take a second and put this number back up on the screen, which is the dial-in information. Again, if you would like to participate in this meeting, yeah, you can dial in at 646-558-8656 using the meeting ID 837-53976549. Okay. Not seeing any public comment. I'm going to move into the public hearing on Article Three. And I'm going to admit Nancy White into this meeting. And Nancy, good evening. Welcome to the meeting. You, you are in the meeting. I'll, I'll have to ask you to press star six to unmute yourselves when you're ready, please. And if you can, I'd ask you to please turn down the volume on your, on your TV in the background. Good evening, Nancy.
Hi.
Would you, would you like to speak for this proposal, Article Three, on the upcoming ballot for the mayoral form of government?
Yes, I would.
Please go ahead.
Sure. First, I want to say of everybody in Bennington, I should have realized that the select board and town manager couldn't be bothered to make sure that the first hearing was going to be televised. I got the petition in November. They had plenty of time to set it up with CAT TV. But it appears they waited until the last minute. So to the 500 people who signed the petition, who had hoped to see the first meeting, that was my fault because I should have made sure that our local government would have made sure it was televised. These are the reasons that I pushed the mayor the last two times it's been on the agenda. I've lived in Bennington all my life. I remember when Bennington was a desirable, affordable and thriving community. Like most of New England, we lost a ton of manufacturing jobs. To combat that, for 40 years, we have paying, been paying many groups of experts. Their mission was to bring new jobs with good pay and benefits to Bennington. They have failed. It doesn't matter if our unemployment rate is 1% in Bennington. No one ever expected that a minimum wage job would be able to support them. Our working class and our retired seniors cannot afford to live here. Part of the reason is because we're spending far too much money on projects and programs that aren't getting us any results. The other reason I'm very concerned about moving towards a mayor is the lack of transparency and accountability in our local government. I've watched the meetings for 40 years. I am very well informed about how the meetings used to operate. I've supported the majority of the things that our local government has done until eight or nine years ago. Prior to that, when anybody had a project or program that they wanted to team up with the town for, they were required to come before the select board for multiple meetings. We saw their plans. We heard what they wanted to do. We knew what it would cost us. We knew what we were looking at for an end result. That ended eight or nine years ago. I don't care if you look at the Putnam Block, the Splash Park, the Y Takeover, the UCS Building at the Rex Center. We had no say and too much information was withheld from us from day one. Now we're looking at the senior center being taken away. You want to use the Ben High. We haven't seen a single presentation from the new owner of the Ben High. That is not how business should be conducted and I don't see it changing unless we push forward to a mayor. Several years ago, the select board started announcing they would no longer answer questions and concerns from citizens who appear before them. That's a public relations tactic. I'm tired of living in a town where citizens say over and over, well, the, the select board and town manager won't do this or won't do that. You work for us. And the only way citizens are going to get their voice and power back is to vote for the mayor and vote down that budget. A three and a half percent increase we're looking at next month. Worst financial crisis we've ever faced with the rest of the world. And they refuse to stop spending money we don't have to spend. On top of it, they've got an options tax. They want to squeeze us for an extra $100,000 a year. I don't know who has the money for an options tax. I don't know who has the money for, for a budget increase. So if people want to do something to help this town, use your voice, use your power, get out and vote for the mayor, vote down the budget and vote down the options tax.
Okay. Thank you very much, Nancy. So I am going to put you back in the waiting room at this point. And if you would like to speak again after everybody else has had a first chance, I'll re-enter you into the meeting. So thank you for your comments. I'm, I'm going to go on to the next caller. Excuse me. I'm going to go on to the next caller. Caller ending in 196, Mr. Bethel, if you are, it looks like you're unmuted, maybe? Can you hear us? Mike Bethel, can you hear us at this point? There you go. Great. Thanks. Sorry about that. Yeah, you came in unmuted for some reason. So good evening, Mike. Would you like to speak to this? Would you like to speak to this Article Three?
Yes, I hope everybody votes. This is the first vote. A couple of other ones to get a mayor that just opens the charter. It doesn't mean that we have a mayor. The legislature body has to get into it. It has to be approved by the legislator. And this is the first vote to open our charter. But if we don't take this step, we'll never be able to move forward with the mayor issue. I like Nancy. Nancy did very well saying what she thought. I don't think we concentrate enough on bringing business here, lowering taxes and being warm and fuzzy and friendly with the people that you people elect, that elect you. The meetings are very curt, quick, shut people out from voicing their opinion. And this happened way before the COVID thing, so you can't use that as an excuse. So I hope people get out in March and vote for the mayor issue. And if anybody has any questions now, they can ask. And I will try to answer them or Nancy. And if not, they can call me privately or Nancy and we'll, we'll, we'll explain them to the mayor. So that is all I have to say at this point.
Mike, if you'd like, I'll leave you in the waiting room. If you, if you don't hang up, I'll, I can re-enter you after everybody's had a first chance to speak if you, if you like that.
Or do you want me to push star 60 to get out of it?
I'll set you in the waiting room. Even go back to listening on CAT TV and then if you like, I can re-enter you at the end.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to go on to caller ending in 458, caller ending in 458. We've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Please press star six and that will unmute you and give you an opportunity to tell us what's on your mind. Nice work. Okay, so caller ending in 458, please, it looks like you remuted yourself. Please, please press star six if you can. And that will, that will allow you to be part of this meeting. Caller ending in 458. Caller ending in four five eight. Please press star six. That will unmute you. It used to be something I could do as host, but there you go. Good. Welcome. Please tell us your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Vicky Sprague. This is the first time I've addressed the select board. I'm an elderly disabled.
We hear you, Ms. Sprague. Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, the thing is playing as well.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a time lag. If you turn the volume down on Cat TV, it'll be a little easier for you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm an elderly disabled person. And I've lived in Bennington most of my life. I have three sons that I've raised here. And I've watched a lot of stuff go on in this town. And I do believe that we need the right to vote on a mayor for the town of Bennington. We need to reaffirm what's going on in our town. For instance, my biggest concern is what just went on with the Bennington Police Department with the Hans Eck. Story. Are you aware of that story?
Yes, we have been following that.
I'm very saddened by this. And I just can't imagine that they didn't look that night or the next morning. They waited two days to go look for this poor young man. Something is wrong with the system. We need to fix what's broken. And I think a mayor coming in, taking a fresh look and reaffirming what we have. I'm not putting the Bennington Police down by any means. Because I know that they work hard and I know that they're good men and women. I just, I don't like what they're doing sometimes. And I don't know whether it's because they're being told what to do by someone else. Or if laws stop them from doing it. But from the naked eye looking in, it looks like, it looks like crap. I can't imagine this poor mother. Or this other young lady that got stabbed in Bennington here. My thought is that. The question about the mayor is the biggest thought. I think we do need a mayor. And also, I think that if the hospital's asking for recommendations from our town select board. That they should really think about maybe getting a rehab and maybe getting a mental health facility put in that building over there. Or some kind of treatment facility. God, we have so many, so many drug problems in Bennington. And it's just going to be so hard to move forward with these businesses and stuff with everything that we've got going on. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Well, Ms. Sprague, I thank you for calling in. It can be sort of intimidating and I appreciate your courage in calling in. I would encourage you, you know, if you have questions about any of these things, particularly that some of the recent crime things that you mentioned. You know, call the town manager. There's a lot behind these stories. There's a lot more than hits the paper and I would encourage you to go ahead and call our town manager if you have questions about that. But listen, thank you very much for calling. And I'm going to go on.
Can I, can I ask you an honest question? What's your thought behind a mayor?
Well, you know, I'm really asking the board members at this point just to. Listen. And then I'll offer board members an opportunity, including myself, if they want it at the end of this. So stay tuned and we'll, we'll let you know what we think.
I will be a part of that.
We will, we will let everybody speak and then if the board members want to say anything, they will at that point, yes.
I hope they do because they are working for us, correct?
We are. Yep, indeed.
So I think that we deserve an answer. We deserve something to show us that something is going to change that. Or not. I mean, we deserve an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your call. Okay, I'm going to enter the next caller. This is caller ending in eight four zero. Oh, no, I pushed eight four zero, but instead I let in caller ending in. Nine eight nine. So. That was my bad. Computer stuff, but caller ending in nine eight nine. I have entered you into the call. Into the select board meeting. I asked you to press star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Thank you very much. Please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, Donald. This is Chad Gordon. How are you?
Chad Gordon, it is great to hear from you. Boy, we miss you on this board. You. You are a fantastic voice for Bennington. Thank you for calling in. What's on your mind?
I'm just calling in to voice my frustration with this process that you have to go through this every couple of years. I think this is what, the second or third time in the last four or five years that this has come up where the voters have continually voted no. I think five times in the last decade. I'm not sure on that. My numbers aren't so good, but. It's just frustrating that this is coming up and the voters have spoken time and time again that they don't want this, that the town manager model is preferred. And it takes away time and energy and effort that you guys put in to prepare for this from other projects that you can be working on. I really wish there was something else we could do. I won't take too much more of your time, but really if the voters want to see change. Vote for different select board members. Vote for people that fit your frame of mind and the thing that you want to see. Thank you guys for continually to work hard. I try to watch and keep up to date and keep it up.
Great. Thank you, Chad. Thanks for calling in. Nice to hear your voice again. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try again to enter calling and caller ending in. Caller ending in eight four zero. Where'd you go? All right, looks like maybe we lost Sam for a minute, but he may call back in. I'm going to go to the next caller. This is a. Two or three number. So I don't know what we'll get here, but caller ending in. One seven seven. We've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Please press star six to unmute yourself and. Caller ending in one seven seven has disconnected, so. I'm going to give Sam another minute to call in if he wants it. Caller ending in. Eight four zero. I have, I have. Nancy White and Mike Bethel still in the waiting room. Waiting to see if Sam calls back in. I guess maybe not. Maybe he's changed his mind. So I did promise the sponsors of this that they could have. Three more, three minutes at the end if they wanted it. So I'll enter. Nancy White in first. And Nancy, you've been entered back into the meeting. If you have any sort of last comments you'd like to make, go ahead and make them, please. Nancy White, if you'd like to make any further comments, you're welcome to. Please press star six to unmute yourself. If not, I'll put you back in the waiting room. Nancy, good evening. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. To answer Vicky's question, she wants to hear from the select board at the end of the meeting. My concern. Hi, can you hear me?
We can't hear you. I'm sorry, there's a lag on the, between us and Cat TV, so that's what's confusing you. If you turn the volume down.
Okay. The reason I pushed the mayor is because the select board hasn't answered our questions for the last seven or eight years. And when you have an entire group, the entire board that sits there. Like bumps on a log and won't talk to citizens who take the time to come before them, I think it's time for a change.
Okay. Is that the end?
The other thing to answer Chad. 500 citizens signed the petition to get it back on the ballot. To have 500 people do that during COVID, I think it says that there are many people who are not happy in this town.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. And I'm going to put you back in the waiting room. I have caller. Ending in eight four zero back. So, Mr. Restino, you are in the meeting. Please press star six and you will be with us.
Hello, Mr. Campbell.
There you are. Good evening. What's on your mind tonight, Sam?
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. You know, this is kind of difficult when you don't have a TV in front of you and people are. Saying different things. You think this might have been repeated already, but there is a simple method and that method is. Instead of going through the process of going on ballot and asking for a mayor vote and going into a mayor system, the easiest way is. Start changing select board members. People have got to involve and get things going instead of doing the same Xs and Os. People have got to get involved and make the change. I'm elated to see that numbers are up tonight. People are watching, at least 50. That's great. That's the highest that I've seen on Cat TV that is watching this meeting. But I think Chad mentioned it and summed it up. I agree with him. There's a lot of time and effort that goes on you folks as far as discussing this. It's been talked about many times. Numerous times for three months and nobody wants to go through that again. So I say go on a local basis and start. Voting for select board members. That will make a change. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Good evening. All right, I'm going to enter, re-enter Mike Bethel. Offered him a chance to have some final comments and. Mr. Bethel, you've been entered back into the meeting. If you'd like to make any further comments, please press star six. That will unmute you and you're welcome to make your final comments. If you don't want to make any comments, you don't have to. We can move on. There you go. Yeah, we hear you, Mike. Can you hear us?
Yeah, wait a minute. Okay, now I can hear you better.
Great, go ahead.
Well. I think Sam. And Chad are missing the point. We all know we can elect different board members and I hope this year you do elect some different board members. But the mayor's system is a leader. The mayor's system is the one person that is going to bring you a vision, a message that you're going to either support that individual or other individuals. And they're going to have a three-year term. That you're going to get to reevaluate them. We never get to reevaluate Mr. Hurd's good or bad deeds, ever. The people. The select board does. And it's impossible to change. The quorum on a select board. Because of you vote three, three, and three. So you never vote one year four and everything like that. We cannot change this system. That is why I believe it is important to have one leader that answers to the select board under this draft. And the select board has to answer to the mayor. They both have veto power under this proposal. No one is going to be the top dog. They're going to have to work together. But the people will have the option to vote for that one individual that is carrying the vision and the message for this town. And most people. That don't live with rose-colored glasses on in this town. Know that taxes are going up, fees are going up. Nobody seems to want to move and bring their businesses to our town or families to our town. And it's time for a change. Now you can stay with the status quo and live like this for virtually ever. I believe it's time for a change. And if Stu Hurd wants to run for mayor, he is perfectly. Has his right to run for mayor if it ever gets changed. And so does Chad Gordon and so does Don Campbell. But we need a leader with a vision for this town. And so far, folks, in the last several years, we've gone nowhere. Now, I'm not saying we haven't made progress. The hospital bought the college. I'm thrilled. I hope they do something positive with it. The Putnam Block, I'm not thrilled with that for $30 million. We could have made all of downtown look like Disneyland for $30 million. But I hope people this time will vote yes to open the charter. That's all this does is allow us to move forward one step at a time. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So, board, as promised. I'd like to close this out and move on to our next items. We have a lot on our agenda still. But I appreciate the fact that there were probably many times when people felt like responding to. Inaccurate information or exaggeration or something that didn't feel right to you. Certainly, it's. Now, this board has been very transparent and has worked really hard to explain everything along the way. But that may not be how it feels and I appreciate the fact that you all were very restrained. Nevertheless. I would like to give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like one. Nobody needs to say anything at this point. But I thought it would be only fair to kind of give you a chance to have your. Your three minutes if you would like it. So if you don't mind, Bruce, I'd like to. Just go down the line and in the order that we introduce ourselves, I think I'd just like to give people a chance to say something and again. Feel absolutely no pressure to say anything. Maybe you're going to write a letter to the editor. Maybe you're not going to do anything. This is just an opportunity if you want it.
No, thank you.
Okay. Jean Connor, would you like a chance to speak?
No, not really. All I want to say is I agree with Chad. The voters have spoken. The voters. Have spoken over and over again, loud and clear. I don't think anything's changed. It's the same old, same old. If I thought the mayor's system would. Make things better in Bennington, I would vote for it myself, but I don't. And I won't be voting, and I won't be voting in favor of it.
Jean Matulak, a chance to say anything? Uh, Jeannie?
Actually, I would. I am not in favor of replacing a professional manager with a politician. And so I will vote no on this charter amendment. In a nutshell, this charter change proposes to remove the steady hand of a manager who is a professional. And replace it with a free-for-all every three years. This proposal trades out a professional position for a political one. The select board is the elected body that determines the ideas and vision for the community. We do this in open session with public input. This charter proposal will negatively impact the manager's ability to help us implement this vision. The manager's job is to implement the vision that the elected officials present to the community. To be effective, the manager needs to be a knowledgeable individual with a firm grasp of the town's budget and financials. The capabilities and capacity of the town staff. Needs to be able to create effective working relationships among town departments. Needs to be up to date on state resources and also state requirements. And needs to have working relationships with other town governments. In other words. He or she needs to develop the depth and the breadth of knowledge to manage the town's interests. This proposal, which has been in front of the voters, and I think none of us can remember if it's four or five times, but a whole bunch of times now. Sets up a system that could bring some unhappy consequences. The mayor manager in this system hires all the staff. Does this mean that if we contribute to the mayor's campaign, you might get a job in town? This system invites cronyism. It's particularly, it's potentially chaotic. It inserts a level of politics that Bennington does not need. This proposal will result in no money saved, no expertise gained, just professionalism will be lost. I urge the voters to vote down this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Jim Carroll, do you have anything you'd like to say about the?
Just a couple of points, but both genes stole most of my thunder. Thank you. And did a good job of it. First of all, I want to correct what I believe is a factual inaccuracy that Ms. White brought up with respect to the increase in. And the town budget of 3.5%. I believe, Stu, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we? in the town budget of three point five percent. I believe, Stu, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we bring it down to two point one percent?
Well, there's the, there's the you're talking about, Jim, the estimated tax rate increase?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the budget itself, and I don't remember, was at one point at three point something percent, but I think in the end, it was something below two percent after the final changes you made where you basically removed a lot of the reserves to bring that tax rate impact down. But I have to and perhaps I can do that while you continue.
No, that's right. It was, I think, two point one percent, Stuart. Estimated two point one percent increase.
And we worked together as a group along with the other budgets to bring it down.
In session.
Yes, absolutely. No background deals. And the other thing that I want to bring up that both genes brought up, and in factually, Janie Jenkins, it's been five times that this has brought up, and the numbers have remained consistent. It's usually seventy, it's very close to seventy thirty not approving the mayoral vote. That is not to say that, you know, if people want it, they're entitled to it. And you can't argue with it. But for me, it just we've got a system that has worked well for a long time. I think there's a certain amount of animus there and frustration that I understand with the voters. And, you know, everyone who sat on this board in the last ten or twelve or even longer years, we know that, you know, we do everything we can to make the town of Bennington better. And hiring a mayor without any real experience is going to be far more costly than, you know, having someone who was a town manager who needs to be cognizant and well-versed in state and local laws is not going to be easy to find. And you can get somebody that's going to be a great sloganeer, sloganeer. But what we need is competence, and I think we have it. And the town manager, I don't always agree with him. But I want to remind voters that we, you know, they obviously put the animus on Stu Hurd, but we are the governing body of the town of Bennington. And if there's real anger, it should be directed at us. The rest of my fellow board members may not want to hear that, but that's, it's our job. It's what we were hired to do. Stu heard or any town manager acts as an advisor and follows our direction. And I want to underscore one final point. And that is the town manager, and this is in our town charter, serves at the pleasure of the select board. And anytime that we're not happy with his performance, he's got two weeks' warning. And that, I think that is so vital for voters to know. If, if a specific term is outlined for a mayor, he's in there till the end of his term. Unless, you know, they vote to recall him. But within a two-week period of time, we can say, you know, hit the bricks, town manager. But again, I just want to underscore that the, the select board is the governing body of this town. And if there's anger that people want to express, they should express it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Donald, if I could just clarify, it was one point five eight percent is the total increase in expenditures resulting in a two point one percent increase in the tax rate itself.
Okay. There may be other things you wish you could correct in there, in that some of those statements, Stuart, but why don't you? Not right now.
Well, I would just, I appreciate what you said to Ms. Sprague. I would ask her to give me a call tomorrow to talk a little bit about the Hanseck situation.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in both of those situations.
Yes, and there's a lot of misinformation floating, so I would like to chat with her about that.
Okay. Jean, you have your hand up, but I really am trying to work through people here. Do you is something you want to say important for me to cut off Sarah here? No?
No, as long, I just have one really quick comment, but I'll wait till, I'll wait till everyone else is done.
Okay. Sarah, if you, if you have any comments you'd like to make, it'd be a good time for it.
It's going to be real brief for me. Yeah, so I am not in favor of replacing a professional position of our town managers. I will be voting no because I believe an elected position of a mayor should not occur. It should be a professional, professional position that we have in our town government that's apolitical. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to chat.
Thank you, Jean. Did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people do realize and take the time to make sure that when you're making your decision and thinking about this, you're getting accurate information and not bluster and just people's opinions, but actual have, have actual facts and figures to help guide you. And if you need help with that, we can help you, or I'm sure Stu would help you as well.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And I usually try to keep my opinions to myself. I often fail, but I am going to say tonight, now I'm getting off this board. It's been a pleasure to serve, but I do feel very strongly that this is a bad proposal. And I really hope that everybody in Bennington that thinks deeply about how this town works will vote down this proposal. It, this proposal was created without any significant public process. Mike Bethel wanted to get rid of Stuart Hurd, so he wrote this proposal, had a lawyer do it up. And it's, and they got a petition going, you know, if we, if this community wants a mayor or wants a change, the route to that is to do it. And this has not, we have no reason to believe that that's the case because so far, every vote's gone down. But we could do a referendum vote at a town meeting truly inquiring, would this town have an interest in a change in government? If, if that vote went up, there could be a period of time during which research was done, during which options were considered, during which the financial impacts could be considered, the professional elements that Janie mentioned, the competence that Jim mentioned. How do we not lose those things if we want some of the advantages of a mayor? So, you know, the St. Albans model or something like that, but there are a lot of different models. We could go that route. We could go a route where we have public involvement. We have a process where we have conversation. But that is not what this is. This is one person's vision, and it's a bad proposal. I, to have one person managing a fourteen million dollar budget that may have absolutely no experience seems ridiculous to me. To have one person with hiring and firing privileges that could be absolutely political in nature seems ridiculous to me. You know, we don't want an authoritarian system here in Bennington. We want a democratic system in Bennington. If we want to change the government, I think we could have a conversation about that. We could get it on the ballot and ask Bennington to, how to do it. And then we could figure that out together, and then we could vote on that. But what we've got in front of us is junk, and I vote, I encourage everybody to turn it down. So, because I'm getting off the board, perhaps I'm being a little bit too blunt in my opinions, but that's it. I'm going to close this public hearing unless there's any last questions. We are closing this public hearing, and we are moving on to community policing. And community policing, we have a lot on the agenda tonight. It's, we're only two minutes behind, which is kind of nice, but I think so I start with Janie or start with Bruce on this?
Bruce is the whole show tonight.
Okay, Bruce, so you, we've got, we've got a second reading and two first readings from you tonight, so please catch us up on where we are and what we need to know.
Okay, the first of the policies, let me do this with it in front of me, is the domestic violence investigations. The let me get to my changes are really, I think I took to heart, or we took to heart, the the requests regarding making sure that the select, that the, that the police department shall, there it is. It has to do with working with community service providers. And that it also so the community service, where's my sheet? There it is. So it's on line eight, nine, and ten of page two, if you're looking at the marked version. So the real change is additionally, the Bennington Police Department will engage with community service providers to provide training and other resources for BPD personnel. The BPD
Are we on domestic violence policy here?
Yeah, I'm on the domestic violence policy. I am on, well, if you want, which, which version do you want, the marked or the unmarked?
You choose.
Well, I was just on the marked copy, but you know what? It's just as easy to see it on the unmarked copy. Again, it's on line eight, eight, nine, and ten where the changes, they were the only changes that were asked, and they, and they are the changes that are there. Okay? It's hard on the unmarked copy to see where the changes were, but you can see them. They're essentially in the same place on the marked copy.
Oh, it's section C, right?
Yep, section C, page two, lines eight, nine, and ten.
And the change is the word will.
And, yep, from, from some more permissive language, it became will. Or rather than is encouraged to, and things of that sort. So it, it really means that they will do this. It's policy language. And that's really the only change that you asked for, and it's the only change you got. So I would move its adoption.
Yeah, I think that's, I'd take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
I can.
Go ahead. Thank you, Sarah. So I, I think that's good. Well said, Bruce. Thank you for making that change. I apologize. I had trouble finding it on the red line, but I, I found it once you explained it. Any further questions from the board on the domestic violence investigations policy? If not, I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Jean Connor, did your hand go up before or after we voted on that? Oh, never mind. Sounds like it's an accidental hand. I'll take it down.
There we go. Let me just, can I just thank, and I'm going to say these, and Nancy Lively, I'll be happy to send you all of these names so that you don't have to worry about spelling.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Gileadly welcome. Domestic violence, the team, in addition to the permanent members of Dan Monks and Dan Ferrera and myself, were Lauren Wilcox, Janice Larago, Peter Lawrence, and Eleanor Hilton. And then we move to traffic enforcement. And before, before I say anything about traffic enforcement, let me say that if you are having difficulty figuring out how this all works, I've been working with it now for three or four months, and every now and then I have difficulty. Suffice it to say, this is a, this is a general order. This came, we were using the general order of the Bennington PD, the existing general order, partly because that would be easiest for them to translate. It really amounts to five different policies. And in essence, the, the second of the five includes a section called automatic license plate reader, and that came from the statewide criminal justice council, or what is now the Criminal Justice Council. And they had put it in the form of a policy, so our department put it in the form of a policy with attached procedures. So that's a sort of a subsection of number two. So if you think of it as five policies with a sixth one stuck in the middle of number two, that's, that's really what we're having. Okay? Now, we're not wedded to this structure, and so if you have suggestions for how we might look at this, I'm going to write down whatever your suggestions are and also hope Nancy is also checking. But we'll see if you have questions. This is a first reading only, or you have comments and things that you want to change. And yes, I will tell you that I've already, I had already seen the, after I posted it or sent it into the town. Somehow, body worn cameras is still misspelled, and it will be fixed. If I have to go to every worn I can think of. It's W O R, not W A R. So that's under related policies up at the top, but it's probably in several other spots. So shoot away if you have questions.
Janie, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, so I did contact Bruce earlier today about the confusion about trying to to read the, this, this policy based on the numbering. And I would, I think we're going to run into this problem of policy and procedure sort of intermixed in some other policies as well. And I think our intention is to separate them out, so there's clear policy, and then there's procedure. So if so we have a one, we have a two, then we have a Roman numeral four, and then we have a three and a four. So I'm wondering if we could just make
And then a five.
And a five, and a five. Oh, yeah. If we could take section four and, and just make it a number, so go one, two, and then number, Roman numeral four becomes three, three becomes four, four becomes five, and five becomes six. And that would put all the policy sections together, and then people would not be confused, and then the procedures would all hang underneath those. Would that, is that a possibility?
It is for me.
Okay, so that, that's one thing. And then the only other thing that I wanted to ask, and this might be covered, I just don't know, is on line forty-one, which is under trap, number one, traffic enforcement, B.
Can you say what page?
I'm sorry, page two.
Two?
So I'm looking at the clean copy.
Okay.
Okay, let me get to the clean copy so I know what you're looking at.
It should be line forty-one, so it's under number one, traffic enforcement policy. I'm wondering if after, at the end of the, of the last sentence, if, if it makes sense to add something that says incomplete data shall, shall require follow-up? Or I just want to make sure, given that our concern in the past, and I understand why we, you know, why this happened, but sometimes there were, the forms were incomplete. I just want to make sure that they're checked before they're logged or whatever happens to them at this point.
Okay. So that's a, that's a helpful, I, I may need to check with Dan to talk about process on that one, but I think it's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other thoughts from the board on this? This is a, this is a fairly involved piece, and Bruce, it struck me that a lot of this didn't get changed and probably came directly from the source, right?
Yes, much of it does. I will say where the major change what happened is in the very, in the first purpose statement, and then in the policy statements under traffic enforcement.
I have one tiny concern that I mentioned to you. I do not expect any changes from this. I just would like to throw it out for you to be thinking about with your, with your committee, and I bet you've already thought about it. You know, in the red line You know, in the red line copy, page 10, lines nine through 12. It's really talking about traffic enforcement methods and detecting violations. And there's an awful lot of literature about over policing in communities these days. And, and that is pretty counterintuitive. But it, there is some thinking that if you are really policing so hard that you're catching every single thing, that you are also creating a lot of disturbance for people who are being stopped and people who are uncomfortable being stopped by the police. And that it's really, it creates a sort of a feeling of unsafety for, for some people. And I wondered just about the word maximizing the safety of the traveling public. You know, that maximize word does not really take into account the fact that there's got to be a financial balance between how many traffic stops we do. And there's also possibly a, a social component to, you know, if you maximize the traffic stops, you could also be having a, making the, making the community feel like a pretty harassed place for some people. So I just, I just wanted to throw out there that that word maximize made me wonder a little bit about the over policing concept. And I have no suggestions for you, just, just wanted to lob that.
Okay. I don't have anything necessarily to say at the moment. But we, I, we'll do some looking. And we did add, as you can tell, one of the reasons we, we didn't just want to maximize safety, but we also wanted to detect, have them focused on detecting violations. And, and by the way, not violate whores. There's a, there's a difference. And so in throughout the document, you will see that we were talking about violations rather than violate whores.
But. And I am not talking about promoting unsafe streets and unsafe traffic.
No, I understand.
Talking about that, the, when, when the, the policing of it goes too far into this sort of over policing category.
This is, this is, yep. I, I will just say back, there was a time when you had questions about discretion. This is precisely where officer discretion comes in. Not all, not all violations are necessarily, need to be stopped. Certainly some, many do, but not all. So it's, it's a fine balance. We'll, we'll do some thinking and you may come back with something. You never know.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak that. Anyone else? Comments on this? This is a first reading, so we would, Sarah, go ahead, please.
I guess I just found a few things. I don't know, did, would you like me to bring those up now? On different, three different pages?
I think if they're general, if they're general and sort of something that the, we can talk about in general terms. If it's, if it's kind of content editing, you know, that could be done directly with Bruce, but you choose, Sarah.
It's up to you. And tell me what, tell me which version you're on.
Sure, so I'm on the, the.
Marked version, okay.
Yep. So this one is the equipment violations, which kind of is going off of what our chairman said. Yeah, I was kind of brainstorming on business day, five days after a violation is repaired. Kind of thinking that might be a, a little bit of a stretch for some people. Kind of thinking that, that they might feel they're targeted every so many, every so often because of violations. I didn't really have a solution for that, just something to think about.
Just, just so you know, Sarah, in New York, if you lived there, you'd have 24 hours.
Yes, I have lived there, yes.
And you may notice that.
Yes.
Yep, you get 24 hours and then you can go and get the, the ticket removed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thinking like business days, what do we want to target? Yeah, so, and then.
You, you will notice that that's a lot of what, okay. That section is actually a section the committee did not look at because it's not policy, it is procedure.
Okay. And then the other ones, I will just, let me look at the other one. Actually, since I mentioned that, I don't want to, I don't want to not say it on air. So the other one is on page 14. It mentions line 16.
Let me get to that. Go ahead.
Procedure, section three.
Sure, go ahead, because again, if it's a procedure, it's not going to be something that we are gonna probably, officers utilizing the ALPR equipment, is that where you are?
Yep, it has been edited out, but I did find another.
Oh, you're right. There's another hot, yes, we'll, we'll change that just so that we get rid of that language.
Exactly, and then.
There's no such thing as a hot list.
Yes, exactly. And then page 19. Line 45. Applicable statutes.
Yeah.
I had a suggestion when a person shall operate, attempt to operate or be in actual physical control of any vehicle on a highway. As a suggestion, an alternative to highway, a roadway might be a better alternative.
You gotta use the statutory language.
Okay.
Even on, under Vermont statutes, even my driveway is a highway.
Okay. Okay, I was wondering about that, but I.
Or a public way.
In here.
Yeah. Those are statutory terms, unfortunately.
Okay, yep.
But if you see things also, you know, in the next week, two weeks, if you see things in, in the stuff that was particularly in yellow. Please, and I will try to rearrange this so that it makes, makes it look sense, like sense that Jeannie, as Jeannie suggested. I don't think it's going to make a difference in terms of the police usefulness. To move that automated license plate reader situation outs into its own section. Okay, just so that everybody knows, if I get my list. I want to thank, in addition to the three of us who are permanent, you've heard about them before. Lon McClintock, Carol Lusa, and Robert Ebert, who worked on that particular policy.
That was a heavy lift. Thank, thank.
It was, it was, and they did a lot of work. The last one is one that I know a number of people have been waiting on. And it has to do, it's the response to persons expressing a mental health crisis. Or words to that effect. Let me get to that. Yes, responding persons experiencing a mental health crisis. And let me, before we start, just say a couple of things about this. And I want to do it from the marked up copy. You will notice that we, we utilized. Though we utilize the IACP, excuse me, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns policy. It was an older policy and much of the language, particularly under policy, was antiquated and old. And Trevor warned me about that. He's at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and was hoping that we would be able to come up with something. And we'll be, when we adopt this and post it, I will be sending a copy back to Trevor. So there are a number of changes. This was a, another heavy lift on the part of the community. And they've been engaged in the process. I want, I want to thank, in addition to the three permanent members. See if I do this with my glasses on. Asher Edelson, Kaye Ganguly, Valerie Gray Shemaf, and Al Bishefkin. So. And. I think. It. I think it, it again reflects a lot of what our discussions have been with the Bennington Police Department, as well as amongst ourselves. Both at budget time as well as in other conversations. It is something of a moving target. What's the best way to put this in policy? So feel free to have at it and make changes. Or suggest changes.
Bruce, this was a really significant rewrite. And I think, I think very well and boldly done. So I, you know, I'm particularly happy that they chose to, you know, it's that Mark Twain quote. If I'd, if I'd had more time, I would have written a shorter letter, you know. And I, I think that that really applies here, where you took out a lot of extra things and you made it, you made it short. You just defined the things you needed to, and you made it much more meaningful. So I am, I'm very happy about that. I'm not sure that you need to list twice the, the community resources. It feels to me like maybe you list them once, or maybe you don't list them at all or something. But anyway, that would be my one minor question.
Okay.
One minor comment on that. But really good rewrite, I think a very meaningful push. So I got a couple of hands here, one from Gene Connor and then one from Jeannie Jenkins. Go ahead, please, Gene.
Hi Bruce, thanks. Um, can we make suggestions on different language for the purpose on page one, line three?
Of course you can.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was editable.
No, but that's, refers to what's editable.
Okay, the two, the two words on line three is tactical and number four is processing. Tactical to me sounds like a militaristic term. I, I'm, I'm just wondering, and I, and like Donald, I don't have any suggestions. I just, I just really dislike those two words. If you'd like me to give it some thought, I can, I can email you some suggestions. Or maybe the board has some, some wonderful suggestions in their heads.
Just for clarity, the two words you, I got that you didn't like tactical. What's the second one of those?
Processing.
Oh, processing skills. Okay.
Why don't you and Bruce work on some wordsmithing if you feel like it?
Yeah, we can do it at another time. But, and again, this is all V L, Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I'm not going to use the initials, language that we didn't attack.
We'll talk Wednesday morning.
I'm sure we will. And anybody else in the community can do this. You know, let me know. Jeannie.
Jeannie, go ahead.
Hi, so Bruce, I think I sent you an email with just some minor changes. And if I didn't, I will, it's still sitting in my draft box then. The, the one, the, the one change that I'm wondering if, if we can look at is on the clean copy, it's on line 15. And it is similar to the comment on the, on the last policy. I'm wondering if we could put a period after. So the B says, ensure the BPD officers receive regular and comprehensive training in responding to persons experiencing a mental health crisis, period. And then strike and whenever possible. And then say, training should be taught by or include members of community agencies. And my, my thinking there is it may not be always appropriate for a local organization to lead a training. But I do think there's real value in having community members and police officers in trainings together. So, you know, I don't know if that, if that causes a problem. But if we can use stronger language to make sure of that.
That, that certainly was where the committee was going. And I don't think it, I don't think it violates what they had in mind. We were just cognizant of not necessarily wanting to require the community partners to always be the, be there. But, but you're right. And that, that may be a, a better way to put the language and, and just eliminate and whenever possible, essentially as language. It wouldn't, it wouldn't harm at all.
Okay, thank you.
Other board comments? So if not, I guess Bruce, you'll be bringing these back on the 28th. Is that, is that our next meeting date, Stuart?
I got 22nd.
22nd, 22nd. Bringing, bringing them back for a second reading on the 22nd, is that the plan? So people between now and then can be in touch with you if they have further comments or questions. And you can have time with the committee, bring us back something that.
Let's just say between now and the 18th. Or actually seventh, evening of the 17th. Since I need to get these into the town office for publication on the, I try to do that. I'll do that on the morning of the 18th.
Good point. Okay, great. Thank you.
It'll be a birthday present to myself.
Oh. All right, so listen, great work, really great work. Please thank the committee members as you speak with them. It's really great to have so many people stepping up. Is there anything else from the community policing team at this point? No? Okay, if not, I'd like to move on to the ladder bond documents, Stuart. You, we could send this to you, but I think we know that this is something the voters have already voted for. They, this is just a matter of getting the, the bond going on it. Would, would you like me to suggest a, a motion here, Stuart? Or do you want to do a little intro on it?
Well, just, just a quick intro, just so that the, the people at home know what we're looking at. We look at these all the time when we're talking about borrowing and bonds. But in, in particular case, we are, we are dealing with the bank. And so some of the, the terminology is a little bit different. But board must approve the loan agreement and authorize, approve the general obligation bond itself. The chair to sign and waive the reading of and adopt the resolution. And then pressing the chair to sign. And then there, the last piece is a tax certificate, which requires approval and authorization for the chair. That's a little bit different than what you would normally see from a normal borrowing. On one of the equipment loans, the tax certificate is something new that the bond bank does require.
It was the limit of my ability to understand all those documents. I had to go through them for quite a while to get them. But it, but it seems to me that it's pretty standard, not standard. It seems to me that it's.
It's incredibly standard language.
All borrowing stuff.
Everybody that worked with the bond bank uses, uses these.
Yeah. And, you know, so the, the bottom line for Bennington is we're looking at about a $53,000 a year payment for about 20 years while we pay off a new ladder truck. And, and this part of the world needs a new ladder truck. Of course, you know, our fire department has made a very good case for that. So we're just going to do it. And we've had a vote on it. So it's just our, our duty to just execute it at this point. Jim Carroll, you have your hand up.
I'd like to make a motion for the waiving of the reading of, of the document.
Okay, I'm not sure we need to read that whole document, but.
We do need a, a motion to do all of the things. I'm wondering, Jim, if you'd like to make a motion to do everything that's in the memorandum from the town manager.
Yeah, if I, if I could suggest, I would suggest a, a motion to approve the loan agreement and authorize the chair to sign it. To approve the general obligation bond and authorize the chair to sign it. To waive the reading and adopt the resolution and certificate and authorize the chair to sign it. And to approve the municipal tax certificate and to authorize the chair to sign it.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
All right, thank you, Bruce. All right, so we, we are going to do these together. Again, complicated documents, simple thing that we're doing here. What, what's the board's pleasure? Anybody have any comments or questions for the manager? Anything else we need to know, Stuart?
No, sir.
Okay. Please unmute yourselves and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you very much, Stuart. I have a question about signing these things. It looks to me like you need originals back instead of just scanned documents. Is that right?
Actually, if you can just return the signature pages that you've signed, it would be fine. We've got.
With signatures, okay. I, I, I'll do that and I'll get the warrants. But as long as I'm sending them, I'll get the warrants to you by, by mail too. So I'll drop all those in the town office mailbox tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you people for that. Next item is the manager's report. Stuart, go ahead, please.
I, I don't have, have much for you tonight. We, we, we got a very compelling update on COVID from Megan earlier in the meeting. But I would just second her concerns. We know that people are tired. They're tired of COVID, they're tired of complying, and it is now more than ever essential that we follow the CDC guidelines, these variants. If you just heard the news today, AstraZeneca has paused its vaccination in South Africa or South America, I'm sorry. Because the variant, it doesn't have, it's not as effective against the variant as they thought it might be. So they're, they're pausing there. So please, folks, as, as variants move into the United States, we, we want to make sure that we are safe. And best way to do it is to follow the CDC guidelines. And that's really all I've got to say. I don't, I don't know, Donald, whether I should mention, you know, since Bruce kind of mentioned somebody's birthday, his own. You mentioned it's a.
Yeah, I did. Sorry, I didn't mean to do it quite like that. That sounded backwards, isn't it?
But it, yes, happy birthday, Donald.
Well, listen, it's, it's not actually today. I got a six month deferral because of COVID. And I'm having my birthday on August 8th.
I was set up to do this, so Donald.
I mean, what would I rather do on the night of my 60th birthday than hang out with you guys, the selectword meeting?
That's just really sad.
Hey.
Hey, Gene, haven't you had two birthdays on air?
All right. Well, enough of that. Thank you, Stuart, for breaking me over the coals there. So we, we appreciate your manager's report, though, and, and all the documents that came with it. Other, let's see, let's do the upcoming agenda. We've got the, we noted that we were meeting on the 22nd. We'll have the second readings on traffic enforcement and mental health. What else have we got? Jeannie, on the, we'll probably do it, let's start with another COVID update from Megan Harrington.
Energy Committee recommendations.
Energy Committee, that's right. That's, yeah.
And it'll be the big one, I think.
Yeah. I'm really excited to hear what they have to say. Although I have actually read the report, so I'm excited to have the conversation with them.
Can I just ask a question about the COVID update? Would it be possible for us, or would you mind if we emailed her questions ahead of time? Because I, I hate to cut the question period really short, because I think people that are watching, we may ask questions that they would want to ask. But maybe if we just emailed her our questions or concerns, she could include it in her report.
That's fine. I think, why don't, I tell you what, why don't you email me? Why don't you email me if you have questions for Megan, or you could email, Sarah, if you're willing, how about you email Sarah? Are you willing to do that, Sarah? Have you got capacity right now? Not so much. All right.
I, I thought that's what I was on, so.
You are.
Continue to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you. If you're willing to email Sarah with questions, then she can pull together a list for Megan and she can kind of queue things up. That would be really great for me. Yep. And that, I think that would make Megan's life, she's got a lot going on right now. I think it would make her life easier too, if we were consolidating our requests to Sarah, through Sarah. Thank you, board. Right, Energy Committee, what else?
I think that's all I've got, Donald, right now.
Okay. Again, we, you know, more to come on town meeting. We will have more information on how that goes down. We will be having our meeting, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, 7:30 on the night of Monday, March 1st. And of course, voting on March 2nd, all day March 2nd. And if you want an absentee ballot, this was made clear before, but if you want an absentee ballot, contact the town clerk, anybody who wants one can have one. Any registered voter who wants one can have one. And she's, they, Kayla and Cassie are absolutely glad to send them out at no charge if you, if you want one. Okay. Other business, anybody have anything? We do have an executive session for contracts that we need to go into. Anybody have anything, another business they want to say? Let's see, see a couple of hands here. Let's go first Bruce, then Jim, then Jean. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just a reminder that if you do want to, to get that ballot, an early ballot, there will be a box out in front of the town office, if it isn't already there, it'll be there shortly, to put your ballot in so you can take care of it all. That way, you don't even have to worry about the mail.
Good point. Who did I say? Jim, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate you that as you near the end of your tenure, you're really keeping tight to the schedule. As a matter of fact, we may, we may end the meeting early. So job well done.
Hey, we've got an executive session to get through yet too, so.
Yeah, well, don't push your luck. Anyway. I just want to, you know, I, I, in, in the past, I've noted those people who have given many years of service to the town of Bennington, and I want to make sure that people know, and I'm going to go in reverse order. Michael Strizzi has been with us for a year. Jared Austin, two years. Benjamin Kazavah, three years. Michael Sharshon for six years. Michael Pierce, six years. Roscoe Harrington, 12 years. Joshua Stemp, 16 years. Anthony Silvestro, 18 years. Edward Coin, 26 years. And a rather obscure individual by the name of Stuart Hurd has been with us for 48 years. So I thank all of them for their service.
Thank you, Jim.
Nicely said. Sarah, go ahead, please.
Sorry, my mouse escaped to another screen. So this is something that has been brought to my attention, that people are only able to find Cat TV on Facebook. So I just thought I'd do a little once over. On Cat TV, channels 15, 16, and 17 have moved up to 1075, 1095, and 1085. And just Select Ward Forum is on February 12th at 6:00 PM on 1085. So again, your channels are now 15, 16, and 17, all the way up to 1075, 1095, and 1085, if you're trying to watch us.
It is a little confusing, but you can do it through YouTube off the web, you can do it through Facebook Live, you can do it on television. So there are a number of different ways that you can get there. Yep. Thank you, Sarah. That's really, really good point. And yep, I'm sorry that Cat TV was unavailable last week. We are, we were all sad about that, but anyway, we're glad to have you here tonight. Josh Boucher, thank you very much. Other, other business from the, other, other business from the board? Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just wanted to show everybody, I know they're backwards, but this was on Front Porch Forum, and it was also in the newspaper that the fire department is selling, these are reflective numbers that you can put on the exterior of your home to help the firefighters find your house in the, at night. They have flashlights and it's often very, very difficult for them to find the actual address. So for $3 a number, you can get your own set and stick them somewhere on your house in case you have a fire, and I hope nobody does. They'll find you much quicker. And I guess call the fire department on River Street, they're the ones who are selling them.
Seems like a good thing to buy for your friends and family, too. All right. We have need to go into executive session on a contract matter. No vote will be taken at the end of that executive session, but we do need, because of the contract, we do need to go into executive session. You have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeannie. Okay, all in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're taking a two minute break. And I'm going to kick Cat TV out, we'll take a two minute break, and then we'll meet, meet back for executive session. Okay. Bennington, thank you very much for staying with us tonight. We appreciate this time you spend with us. Stay safe and we'll talk to you again on February 22nd.